This conference will now be recorded.
We'll call the order of the monitoring select word at nine AM. And we have all members present here in town hall. First item of business is appointing Roger McDonald to the finance committee. So I would move to appoint Roger McDonald to the finance committee until the next election.
One second.
Any other discussion on this? We discussed it last week in previous. All right, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval. Thank you, Roger. The next item of business is the renewable energy working group contract. So Peter did follow up, or Peter did respond to the email last week.
Yeah, he did. I went to their meeting on Thursday.
Yeah.
And I wrote him that email and then he sent us three copies out. You know, they wanted to bite it out into the two proposals and he was, he implied that he hadn't heard from Sean at that time and he wasn't 100% sure if he had signed on. He didn't believe there was anything there. He just thought we need to get Sean to make sure that we do the contract that, the addresses we put in. And then the transfer station, which I didn't know was who farm is looking to do the property next to them. So they're looking at three different options. Like would it just be managed as part of our project? You know, would they share some of the responsibility or would they have like a full,
Give around.
There are, you know, like a full member, team member on the renewable energy.
My thought was that, so he wants to use the Metagrant for the gravel pit?
I believe that.
That's, well, that's what I, when I just read his email, which seems good. The ARPA monies, he wants to use both with Beacon, but he wants to use for the fire company buildings. And I would, I would just recommend that we hold off on investing more research into the fire company buildings until the fire company, until we feel out the fire company, whether they're for or against solar on their buildings. Because if they're for it, I don't see why we can't continue to look into the buildings. But if they're against it, we should probably change course.
It sounds like they have some concerns because of the recent fires and that seems like it weren't a discussion.
I think.
We just, somebody needs to sit down. Sean and Peter and maybe some other people need to be at the table and have a conversation. Okay, what are your concerns? Here's what we know about that. We wouldn't use that particular vendor. There haven't been problems with other.
There's, there's several good local vendors that you could bring in and ask any questions. Give them the same standard questions. Ask them, give their feedback. I'm sure there's some national data on it, but it's not a huge problem. The batteries can be a different story. I have the batteries installed panels.
But yeah, I think Peter's not here today, obviously, but.
He said he was coming, so.
He might come.
He said he implied he was coming, but I'm not sure.
Well, if he doesn't come, I mean, I think that we should.
I can follow up with.
That, that maybe you should tell him that we want more, we want to feel out the fire company's interest and commitment before we do anything further on the fire company buildings. But I have no problem with him wanting to use the Metagrant for the gravel pit.
Yeah. I would concur.
And then I still, he didn't really answer in his email why the town shed and the salt shed got completely.
Next.
Next. He did say why they didn't want to put the two in one proposal, the private nonprofit buildings and the public buildings. But he didn't say why, why did those two buildings, is there something that we don't know? I mean, is it just? The cost of rain.
Is that.
Power lines.
Yes.
All right, so we got. All right.
Peter.
Hi, Peter.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A little bit chair, maybe use this one. You don't, you don't have to shout across the room.
Thank you for joining us. So we just were talking about it briefly before you came. And I think that there's no opposition to the gravel pit, using the Metagrant for the gravel pit research?
At school farms.
At school farms.
We're, you know, we're, we will not be in a decision-making position with school farm.
We had understood it was possibly an additional thing for the town that was just going to be adjacent thing.
Well, in terms of attracting a solar developer, there may be advantages if they can negotiate two agreements at the same time that are physically proximate. In part because the location is not close to three-phase power. And anybody to do anything there has to bring in three-phase power. So they're bringing it in for, what, two times, three times the amount of electricity to be made? That would, that could be an advantage. We've discussed these things with Gould Farm. And the working group has decided that it's important for us to maintain our decision-making independence with regard to the town property. We want to, Gould Farm would like to, and we would welcome them to piggyback on our efforts and develop whatever Gould Farm land they feel is appropriate for their purposes.
So just to clarify, the Metagrant is looking at the town shed and the salt shed buildings?
And, and that, I think it's nine or 11 acre parcel that includes the closed landfill. We have met with DEP. They couldn't be happier about the prospect of solar generation on the closed landfill. We have a good relationship with DEP, the town does, in, in the matter of monitoring the landfill. So they're happy about the prospect.
How proximate is that to the Gould Farm site?
Adjacent.
Adjacent?
Yeah.
Okay. And so the sheds, the sheds are still under consideration?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause it's just cause they were crossed out on the other thing, but I guess that is because the separation of the Metagrant and the.
Correct.
ARPA monies.
And it also simplifies the RFP process. Because the firehouse pavilion is, you know, a substantively different circumstance from the, you know, it's owned by the town, it's close to three-phase power. This is owned by the town, is not close to three-phase power, but has potential for larger capacity.
There's been some feedback from the fire company that their concern centers primarily around the recent fire that they participated in putting out that was all of solar power.
Yeah, I, I exchanged texts with Sean over that issue. And it feels like a non-issue to me. He was at the fire in Sandisfield that raised his alarm. That array was put on that roof by a previous owner many years ago. I don't know how many, could be more than a decade. It was a roof that Sean said when they got there was covered with pine needles. So, you know, it had hazards. And in text, Sean raised this issue where it's like, whoa, we gotta be careful here. And I said, come on, you know, you're dealing with apples and oranges. The roof at either the firehouse pavilion or pavilion will never be covered with pine needles. The technology has changed a lot in the time since that array that caught fire was, was, you know, was built and installed. It was made by Tesla. You know, and which is a company that has just put things out there maybe before they perfected them. So my response to Sean was, sure, it's a very marginal risk, but we can control it by, you know, maintenance and procurement and all these steps. It's not a reason not to do it. I was very clear about that.
He may have been less reassured than you would have liked, so I.
Reassuring Sean is a, is a large undertaking.
So, but it might require an in-person meeting with some data or maybe a representative from a company showing their fire safety record or you might want more data than to, like, if it were me and I felt that way, I might want more data too.
We are a long way.
From that.
From a proposed system for those two roofs. And I have pestered Sean for the information we need to take the next small step in that direction. I still have not got something as simple as the national grid invoices for those two accounts or one account. I don't even know what it is. So my feeling with, as the, as the town property where the shed and salt shed and closed landfill are, has evolved over the last month or six weeks as a prospect. My focus is on that. Fire company owns the asset. It's going to really be up to them to take steps to find out whether they want to do it, if they can do it, what it would mount to, all that stuff. But for now, I'm done pushing. You know, they're gonna, they're gonna have to take some responsibility there if they want to do it. If they don't want to do it, then we'll know.
So Peter, on that, on that note, it seems like it might make sense to hold off on signing a new contract or any contract amendments related to the fire company buildings and the ARPA grant until we know whether or not the fire company does want to move forward?
If you wait for the fire company, nothing will happen.
Yes, but at the end of the day, I mean, it needs to be a partnership. And I'm just, what I would propose is that if it makes sense, maybe the ARPA monies could be used on the town shed and the two buildings over there. And the Metagrant could be used on the, on top of the landfill. I don't know if that.
My, my reading after our meeting with Paul Carey, the head of DOER, is that he's very uneasy about overlap of the two sources of funding. He's covering his ass. He wants to be sure that the Metagrant funds are used for what's specified in a very complicated and somewhat frustrating application process aimed at a community's shared solar system. So I think the, the most expedient and clear-cut way to satisfy him, which is critical, is just to say that's, that's, that location, that prospect, that project is under, is going to be funded by a contract with Beacon focused on, you know, the Metagrant provisions for what, what we can do there.
Yeah. So what if we, what if we go forward with that full steam ahead? Because it sounds like everything that was promising and everyone's working together, including Gould Farm at the adjacent site.
Yes.
And then what if we did, put a feeler out to the fire company and really get an assessment of if they're into, if they're, if they want to move forward with the project or not before we, before we disperse any more ARPA funds towards that project? Only because if, if they know now that they don't want to ultimately do the project or that's their feeling, then maybe we shouldn't be focusing on that and focusing. And that way, let's say the Metagrant runs out of funds, you know, they've done what they can do up there. The, the ARPA funds are much more flexible, right? Cause they're at the select board's discretion. So ultimately they could be used if the fire company isn't interested in continuing to explore their property. They could be used at some stage in the process with the, with the salt shed and the landfill.
You know, that, that makes sense in, in a real politic kind of way. But, and, and given the circumstance, my own circumstance, my personal circumstances, I just don't have the bandwidth, as I call it these days, to pressure the fire company to make decisions. If the select board in their continuing multifaceted negotiations with the fire company is willing to press them on using their roofs to generate clean electricity, I am all for that. And I think they need to experience that pressure in order to make the decisions that need to be made. So I would encourage the select board to act with, with that in mind. I, I can't be that point person for now. I would be glad to facilitate an effort by the selects to, you know, really seriously engage with the fire company. But I've been doing that already for six or eight months and I haven't gotten very far.
I think that's just what sort of Justin's saying yet. Like, we're, we're all for it also. But if the fire company isn't willing to throw a hat in, there's only so much.
Yeah.
We can do. I don't know. I mean, I think that facilitating the conversation would be great. It's sort of a question of coming up with a way to do that. I mean, and I think it would be useful to have either you or one of the other members of the working group present if you meet with Sean.
I would be happy.
Because without that, there's always going to be questions that aren't answered.
I'm, I'm happy to participate in a, I would, I would be grateful for being invited into the conversation. But I'm not, I'm not the one to initiate it now. I've been there, I've done that.
Do we want to see if we can schedule the conversation? And I, obviously it could either be at a, at a hot board meeting, a regular board meeting, or one of us could go to it to be the, the participant on behalf of the select board. What are you guys saying?
I mean, I think we should invite Sean in and let him say, you know, we need to know is, if the, if the fire company is on for it, we need a commitment from Sean that they're going to put the time to help us get it done.
Right. So he says that when the right people are around and they have a meeting to discuss it as well, not make the decision.
Does that, I'm assuming, does he mean the fire company right people?
Yes. I'm asking who the right people are, but I'm assuming it's the officers.
Can you also ask him, does he feel like he needs some information?
Fire, I have some reservations.
Right. But does, does he need more information about current technologies to help him make that decision? Because I would if I were him. I mean.
I, I think it's a little hard to get generalized information.
It is, but let's face it, like, if you, if you hear about a car that has a problem, right? You don't decide not to buy a car ever again because one model of one manufacturer's car was a disaster. Right? We all know examples in our lifetimes where that happened. But it's easy to paint that brush wide when it's a lesser-known technology that you're not experimenting with, right? If it was a car, he would, he would feel confident investigating, making decisions. But when it's a technology that's not really your, your knowledge base, it becomes less certain. I mean, I, I would feel less certain about it. And so it may be that we need to figure out what type of information would make them feel confident. And I don't know enough about the field to even know what that information would mean.
As the owner of the asset, the fire company is, you know, as you understand, the decider. And solar installers and purveyors of solar systems are reluctant in the first place to talk to an entity like the fire company, which is kind of this municipal independent hybrid. Because it's so fraught with competing interests compared to residential solar installation, which has, you know, one decider, you know, one situation. The fire company, if they take the initiative as the owner of the asset and start soliciting bids or just, you know, interest from solar providers, I'm sure they could do that. But for someone else to do that on their behalf is, I think, a fraught endeavor.
I guess my question would be, is the only way to get better information about the likelihood of buyers to do it by soliciting information from the provider? Because, you know, you don't ask Chevrolet if Chevrolet thinks their model XYZ is going to blow up.
Any information that the select board can bring to the table would be useful.
And I guess the reality is I don't have that information. And I suspect you have spent a lot more time researching this stuff and might have quicker, more comprehensive access to good information about, about the safety of this stuff than I do, for sure, because I don't have any.
I don't have that.
Okay.
Off the top of my head currently, in part because I don't share Sean's alarm about the potential for fire. I just, I, I think it's a very, very low risk.
But, you know, I, we've got a solar provider and I've done a lot, he's done everything at my house from batteries. So I'll call him and see if there's some kind of data that shows. But, you know, the installation company Tesla, they had a subsidiary, which was his cousin's company. They were known for faulty installations. So, but I'll see if I can find out if there's any kind of data.
But even, even having documentation of the installation having been the issue would be useful. Because that, I mean, it would be reassuring to me to know that it was the faulty installation and that it was a particular purveyor and that that purveyor is not being used would change, might, I can't say what will convince fire company. I can just say as an individual, that type of information makes a big difference to me.
I'll see if I can find that.
I think that in, in meeting with the fire company and in discussing this with the fire company, engaging with them on the whole issue, I think it's important to, I think, to suggest to them that the prominence of those buildings and the, their primary concern with safety and the overriding urgency of making clean electricity would be a boon to their mission. Everybody driving by would say, oh yeah, the fire company's doing it. Pitch it to them. Tell them you can turn this to your own benefit. It's a, it's a public good. And it's addressing a fire that's not in the building down the street at seven o'clock in the morning. It's addressing a fire that's in the particulates in the air. And, you know, it's not their usual kind of emergency. But if they make a public display of the attention they're giving to a long-range emergency, I think that speaks well for them.
So for leaving the meeting today, I think that there's a lot, there's interest in further discussions with the fire company?
Yes.
And maybe persuading the fire company?
Yes.
Sort of to display. But for the time being, I would propose that we move forward fully with the Metagrant and the, the covering the landfill and the two town-owned buildings.
Yes.
At the highway department. And for the moment, put on pause the ARPA funds exploring the fire company installations until we have a more definitive answer from the fire company.
That's, that sounds very, to me, a catch. And with respect to the Metagrant, I know that we have all the, all the state-required protocols in place for procurement. But we don't have a signed contract between the select board and Beacon to do the work. And the way it works, as Beth explained to me on Monday, is that Beacon builds the town, the town pays Beacon. The paperwork is forwarded to the DOER and the Metagrant reimburses the town for the expenditure to Beacon.
So.
She's in an awkward position now because she doesn't have a contract and she can't send invoices.
So do we, is she expecting us to draft the contract?
Well, the, yes.
Oh, that's news. Yeah. I thought we already got a contract for the ARPA funds, because that's how I've been paying her is with ARPA funds.
Whoa.
Yeah, but the, the Metagrant only became a fact in recent weeks.
Right. So the Metagrant, he just sent the email last week saying that you couldn't allow spend monies. So you weren't allowed to spend until a fully executed contract.
That was my misunderstanding until I spoke with Beth on Monday. And she explained to me that it's a two-step process. It's not as if she invoices DOER, she invoices.
Right, no, no, but I mean, she can only do, we can only invoice right now for the DOER grant or Metagrant from last week when he gave us a fully executed contract. So I think it was like the shit that I could look and see when he.
But is there not a tweaked contract between the select board and Beacon as to how on her consulting, as to the focus of her consulting?
Peter, I saw a tweaked contract about the, basically the ARPA funds in the fire company properties.
Right.
And that was our original contract with Beacon that we were going to pay for with the ARPA funds. I saw a tweaked version of that. I don't recall seeing a proposal regarding the Metagrant.
Okay.
And the, those town properties.
Well, this is not my strength, obviously. So I will ask Beth if she wants to, I thought she had submitted a revised contract.
We haven't seen one, if you do.
I could be, I could be wrong about that. And if she wants to, I mean, I'm sure she will want to submit a revised contract for.
The Metagrant and those particular properties. That would be great. And if we get one, we'll look at it, we'll try.
You don't, you don't have one now. You haven't received any kind of contract like that.
Last week.
That's the one that's only the private house, so I would say no.
That's, that's, I think, been a little bit of the, why I was a little bit confused. It's because I hadn't seen on the Met, on the Metagrant.
Right.
So.
Which is why you spoke in terms of the.
Firehouse.
The firehouse being eliminated.
Yes. No, the firehouse being only, yes. So, yeah, she wants to send us that. I don't know if she can use essentially what might make sense. Cause we spent a decent amount of time and energy on the ARPA, the ARPA contract regarding all four buildings. Can we, can we just redo that?
You know, this is so far above my pay grade, I would think the best thing is for you all to talk to Beth.
And Beth and our town council actually have a relationship, so maybe.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not, this is, this, this piece of the puzzle is easy to resolve. It just takes the right people to do it. I'm not him.
All right. Well, I will email Beth and Donna and see if they can come up with something easily.
Okay. Or do you have a phone number for Beacon? She's very accessible.
I think I have it from previous emails with her. And then for the moment, we will explore the fire company's interests, but we won't continue on in that project right now. And it sounds like you're, you know, needing more information anyway from the fire company.
Well, yeah, the, the story.
I mean, it, it seems to me they're not going to produce anything until they feel like they want to go forward with it. And it seems like they're not certain of that. They have some concerns. So unless we can address the concerns, I think they're going to give it the thumbs down. That, that's my gut hunt from what I'm hearing. Like, I don't know, it's not here to ask. So it seems like there needs to be a conversation in which we have some information to share with them so that they can feel more confident making a decision they're happy with. Because I don't think they're going to produce any documents unless they truly support it.
Um, another.
Just, I mean, you know, I'm speaking out of turn here because the, the principal party's in here.
Right. Another detail that I think is important to know is that in our conversations with Beacon and when, when we were focused on the firehouse and pavilion, there was concern about the pavilion roof. And the concern involves the roofing material, the metal covering, not the framework. The generalized, not, not, not an engineer, not building inspector's opinion, just the general opinion is that the structure is okay. The, the surface material is warm. And that's always a question with rooftop solar. Beacon, um, I, and I have made this point with Sean and identified the company. There is a company in Eastern Mass that Beacon has worked with in the past that has a membrane system that can extend the life of that roof for ten, twenty years without having to touch the structure. It's just something they bring in, put on, and stump. I think that makes a tremendous amount of sense because any rooftop solar insulation will probably obsolete in twenty years. So it's not like you're covering up a flaw that will come back to bite you later on. And it's inexpensive compared to taking off the roof and replacing it, right?
A lot of solar companies don't put panels on unless there's twenty years plus on. That's what happened with mine.
For that reason.
Yeah, they, they want, they, they go, you have to pay to take it off in five years. They won't do it.
So Peter, I drafted an email, well, Peter and anyone, just see if there's any input. Just to Beth from Beacon and Donna as town council. Is there a proposed contract between the town of Monterey and Beacon regarding the metagrant and solar consulting in the highway department buildings and the old landfill? If there is not, is it possible for Beth and Donna to negotiate a contract and propose it to the select board? Can the contract be signed and lead to ARPA funds be used as a template?
Fine.
Solar.
Yeah.
Because I imagine that what they kind of did eventually with the ARPA contract is they worked it out and then sent it to us, so.
Yeah, they had no legal stuff that, yeah, preferred.
Lawyers always find they have to change something.
Sorry?
The lawyers always find they have to change something.
Trying to get paid something.
About, that's right.
And so then who will be, who wants to be the point person for negotiating with the fire company?
Maybe though.
You, I, the only reason I propose you is because you have some experience with solar.
Very, very, regional transportation with the solar.
Well.
I, 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 I'll make the call to Nancy.
That's the other thing, the fire company could pitch, the fire company, if they, they have the capacity on those roofs to generate significant amount of electricity for a charging station. My, my pet project is a town-owned electric vehicle that makes regular trips around the town, so we don't drive as much as we have to. If that was, you know, obvious up there and serving, you know, many people in town, I think the fire company would benefit from that.
Possibly, although I have to admit that where I live, I would never be inclined to drive my vehicle to the fire company to sit there while it charged. And maybe there are other.
Depends what charger you're putting.
I'm not talking about you driving your vehicle to there.
You're driving them having a vehicle that's used for public service or whatever.
I'm, I'm talking about a town-owned electric vehicle, a van that makes regular, you know, shopping doctor kind of trips.
You should talk to the council and H. Um, they're.
Oh, they're, they're all over.
No, the reason I'm saying, it's not about the electric vehicle, but they're actually looking at, because they're the ones that have organized the sort of transportation trips for people.
Yeah.
And one of the things they're looking at is whether, like, we use services that are elsewhere that come here to pick people up. And one of the things they're looking at is trying to come up with a local, how would you phrase it, a driver system, like a volunteer driver system?
They call it like a volunteer driver.
But it, it turns out to be an extremely expensive thing to run even as volunteer, never mind us having a driver, um, for a load system, which is why diffuse places like here don't have it, right? So, but she'd be the person to talk to.
If you don't have to pay for the fuel, you're, you're ahead in the game.
You have to pay, it's what's expensive isn't the fuel.
I know.
What's expensive is the people that drive it.
You can save money by generating a clean electricity to fuel a vehicle and drive it around the Berkshire. Tate Coleman has done a good job at Great Barrington organizing this sort of thing. It's initiative, it takes a will to make it happen.
It, it takes more than that. It takes the initiative and will of a lot of people that choose to use the system. And so I, I think that both things are necessary because if you build it, they don't necessarily pump despite field difference, right? And if you build a system that costs a ton of money, you just pay the people to drive it, right? Because you have to pay them for their hours and you have to pay all the overhead that's involved with having staff, right? And if you do that and there isn't enough usage to make it worthwhile, it doesn't matter that you save a little money on the fuel because your biggest expense isn't even the fuel in the vehicle, the person. So I, I'm not, I'm not peopleing it. I'm just looking at it realistically from an infrastructure point of view. That you don't have enough people to move to make that worthwhile. It, it's going to fail ultimately because we're going to save a lot of money, right?
Well, people are working on it. The, the COA is working on it here. People are working on it in Great Barrington with, with success.
Right, but Great Barrington has a much bigger population, Peter.
Sure.
And that matters, right? Because that means that there's a lot more people to use the system if you build it.
I, I feel like this, the way Sean feels about the safety of, you know.
I, I don't think they're equivalent, but okay.
Um, I think that the obstacles are what you address. Of course, there are obstacles. Of course, there is a rooftop panel that caught fire and you have to be aware of that and take steps to make sure it doesn't happen, but anyway.
Yes, well, Peter, population is population and distribution is distribution. That is not something that can be overcome by choosing a different installer, right? Like, if you have a population of under nine hundred and versus a population of over ten thousand and you've got a population of under nine hundred spread out and a population of over ten thousand more centrally located, you have a very distant, different logistical situation for use of a shared resource. It's very different.
True.
And those are not things that are overcome by getting a different installer. So I'm, I'm not saying it's a terrible idea. I'm saying, I don't think you're correctly identifying what the difficulties with achieving that goal are. And I think it's important to know what the real difficulty is because that becomes the critical tipping point of whether you choose to go forward with a project or not, right? You don't build a stadium for ten thousand people in town with under nine hundred people unless you're planning to change the entire economic system that's involved, right? Like, you have to build something that's in keeping with the population that you have. That's all I'm saying. And I, and I don't know that we have a population to merit the huge investment in infrastructure in terms of somebody's time and effort to make it and the payment for the person. I could be wrong. If someone's willing to show me some numbers, to show me why that system would work and how easy it would be to get people to buy into using that vehicle, I would change my tune. I'm just expressing what I've seen in terms of knowing Tate and looking at the Berkshire Regional Transport Authority and issues with bus services. And I, I know that in specific circumstances, like getting kids from Southern Berkshire to, to, to Conic for a specific reason, right? They knew exactly how many kids they had to move. They knew exactly when that was going to be and they could make a plan for what that was going to cost and how to achieve that goal. This is a very different circumstances, circumstance that I think the, the difficulties with it are real. And you're selling it as though I'm talking about the wrong thing, but I don't think I am. So you have to convince me that the numbers were there to make it a viable system.
Well, I, I think you're making a good point. And after a year and a half of work, we haven't even got to the point where, um, we have the electricity to use.
Okay.
So, once we get that far, then we can dive in and see what the possibilities are for how we can best use that, that electricity.
Okay.
I feel that, you know, we, we would be addressing an energy use problem that is peculiar to the spread-out nature of life in the Berkshires. We all drive a whole lot more than perhaps we need to. That's all I'm saying.
I, I'm not going to disagree with you.
It's a, it's a two-pronged thing. First, you generate the clean electricity, then you decide what's the best way to use it.
Or first, I figure out how to change where you live so you don't have to drive as much. That's also possible.
I've had a lot of notions about this sort of thing that are completely absurd. We all know that. Everybody knows that about me. So, um, I'm not going to waste the town's resources in doing that sort of thing. But, you know, the chance to address two problems at once is appealing.
Always.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for coming in.
So we'll get the mete contract figured out hopefully by next week.
Great.
And then Frank will, Frank will work with the fire company to determine what their interest is in those buildings. And based on what we learned there, we'll, and based on the decision that's made by the fire company, we'll determine how to move forward with ARPA funds.
Please include me in those discussions.
Yeah.
Um, also, I thought we had, you know, we had one vacancy on the renewable energy working group. And I thought we had a replacement, but her circumstances have changed substantially, so she's not present.
Okay.
So we're down one member.
So we did make the appointment. So she should just be in touch with, um, the town clerk probably and the town administrator and let them know that she is not going to accept that appointment.
Okay.
And then let us know if you find someone and we'll let you know if we find someone interested.
Good. I don't think the four-member group is a particular problem because all our votes are unanimous so far. So, I mean, it's not like we're, we're, we're going to end up in some two-two tie that tangles things up indefinitely. But I would love to have someone of Isabel's sensibility and age on the group for a bunch of old farts.
And that eliminates me.
You already have the job.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah.
Too many hats as it is.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
What's up next?
Next is the Southern Berkshire ambulance contract. So one thing I think that I said that I would do last week that I didn't get done is convert it to a Word document.
Which, that you're talking about converting this one to a Word document.
Yeah.
Um, by the way, Donna answered and says that, uh, her partner Jenny Merrill is working with Beth on other contracts and she's sure she and Beth have worked on this.
Okay, great. For the, for the metagrant?
Yes.
For the metagrant.
So hopefully we'll, you know, we'll hopefully be able to sign that next week. I'm assuming that they have standard. Well, we already went through the whole, the only difference is how it's going to pay.
It's, it's how it's going to pay and what they're focused on.
Yeah.
That's all.
So the Southern Berkshire ambulance contract, we'll get converted to Word. We need to add a couple of things. The other thing that I wanted to do is reach out to.
First of all, this is not an actual ambulance contract.
No, that's just.
EMS, like, this is not a good sample, I don't think.
No, I would, I would not do this. I, this here, or unless they had one. Melissa, do they have one or do they have a suggestion for a contract?
Yeah. You don't have to that much.
Well.
Speaking of that, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Right.
The next. I think the next thing is to reach out and also just to give them a, a heads up that we want to propose a contract to them.
Well, they have to propose.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe we should directly reach out to them, say we have to have a contract in order to be able to pay.
The council working on that.
Yeah, because.
And ask them if they have one. Like, do they have a draft contract they could use for anybody else?
Sure. Well, we'll see.
When I asked them if we had one existing, they said no.
Right, so we, but that's we, which they would have said, but we're working on.
Yeah.
You would think, but then do we need to reach out to Donna and then say we're going to have to craft a contract for the ambulance services? Do you have one from another?
She gave us one.
She, she gave us.
Oh, that's right, the other one.
After we, after we.
That's the one that Justin's going to convert.
Yeah, so I'm.
Ah, okay, I'm gonna check.
I'm going to convert to Word. Well, I'm going to, I know someone who can do it. And then, and then Melissa, please reach out and just Southern Berkshire, let them know. Emphasize that the monies are approved by town meeting. We want to disperse them, but we need a contract first.
What was the header on that? I'm going to find it.
Hello? I'm sorry, I should come back for a dump ticket.
Yeah, it should be done in about forty-five minutes or so.
Ooh, okay. So we're here around the detour.
Was it for you or for Justin? The email that had other contract and I just found that.
I think it was in maybe six twenty-seven docs.
Okay.
Six twenty-seven documents. Yeah, that way Southern Berkshire is not blindsided once we've spent some time working on it. One, one thing that I think we should discuss, we talked about a time. Time limit?
Great.
For response times?
Yes, we do.
I think actually it's worth asking Melissa, when you don't, when you reach out to them, that we want to include a response time requirement. But please note that there will be, you know, exceptions for extenuating circumstances, like if both of their ambulances are somewhere else, we need to call mutually. But ask them if they have any data. I don't know if they keep their response time data.
How many years would you want for?
Um, whatever they have, because I just, otherwise I wouldn't really know where to start. And I don't know that Sean would have that information. I actually am pretty cer- certain he wouldn't. And I don't know that Berkshire County Dispatch would probably have that information if they, but I don't know how easily, how accessible it is. But otherwise, how would we do a response time if we don't know the history? Fifteen minutes, twenty minutes? And there definitely has to be some exception for extenuating circumstances.
Um, this does look like the Beacon contract. This is what I found in the six twenty-seven. Maybe there is a contract. Feel free to scroll further. I only re-signed.
You didn't sign, but I think this is, you know, it takes out highway department and it keeps firehouse and.
Right, so that's what I remembered, but I'm not finding exhibit A in this contract.
What's the, what's the beginning of it? Is that the first page? And then when we started. It's not the same. Get the one that's in the twenty-seven.
It does say Monterey and B I S mete contract.
I know.
Exhibit A.
It is a exhibit A that has the Monterey Highway Department.
Yeah.
On top. This is a, so this is a different document.
I don't know how it is.
No, it is, look at, this is the, this is an expo board. It's a different document.
This is the, that was in my files.
I know.
That is more, that's further into the packet.
That's further into the password. But I'm not finding that.
Did you have to go to the email from Peter and then find the document? Was that attached to the email?
This was in the six twenty-seven documents.
Directly.
Yeah, directly.
Directly in Peter's email. I think his email was an attachment to it.
Right, and I think the contract that you sent us that was directly from Beacon is not the same one that he had. Is that's my point.
Yeah, I haven't, I don't recall ever seeing this.
I don't recall, I mean, I I must have looked at it because it was in the six twenty-seven, but it wasn't the same document. Um because there's nowhere in the exhibit A does it have that crossed out thing that was in Peter's?
But he had like four attachments to his email.
Okay. So this, this contract doesn't say anything about it and it does say meta on it. It doesn't say anything about the site, so
I'm gonna resend you the Peter Marquette email so you'll see everything how he sent it.
But Susan, maybe it makes sense to respond to the email with Beth and Donna and say that you just discovered that and so maybe the problem is the fifteen thousand was the amount of both the ARPA and the Metta.
Ah, so that might not work. Right.
Well, no, but the fifteen thousand makes sense, but I just don't know.
But it's combining the two and we need to separate.
No, 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 sorry. They were each fifteen.
Oh, I see.
But what, what, the only thing I'm confused about looking briefly at this document here is whether, does it mention the landfill and the highway department?
I'm not, I'm not finding either of those. Scope of work set forth in exhibit A. There's scope of work.
Oh, two municipal buildings and the town's got refilled.
Right, so it's both. So, okay. Yeah. But it is nothing of, and so that is just that and nothing about the fire company?
Yeah. I I got lost in them.
Yeah? No, I did too.
Monterey and BIS. Revised and new agreements you've had?
Uh Monterey and BIS contract underscore P, starting at time of con- Monterey contract number one. State contract number, the little PRF dash.
It's a error downloading the file. Could not fetch the file content. So if you don't mind.
Do you want to read for it?
Yeah, or if you're able to. Just respond that way, Donna, and Beth doesn't think that we, Beth knows that we found it.
That's silly. Okay, when I downloaded it, it downloaded it to Peter Marquette's. Okay.
Do you want me to send it again?
The contract.
No, no, I got it now. It just, I had to enable a little bit. All right, so I now have a Word version of the contract. Who do you want me to send it to?
Can you reply to the email with both Donna and Beth or say that we found it? Um but as far as the Southern Berkshire yeah, I mean, and you might as well ask Sean if you don't mind. Does he have data on response times? I mean, if it's something we want to include, we're gonna have to know what the history has been.
I don't think that I am sending one that he's shown me. I think it tracks on the show.
No. What what would track is basically Berkshire County Dispatch will say, you know, Southern Berkshire Ambulance, please respond to Monterey and the address. And then at a certain point, Southern Berkshire is gonna radio, we're on scene in Monterey. And what's the difference between those two radio transmissions? If Sean doesn't have it, which I really don't think that he does, does Berkshire Dispatch have it? I mean, I think what we're probably gonna find is that there's a lot of response times between ten and twenty minutes, a few over twenty minutes. So we could just say something like a response time of of twenty minutes, but we'd we'd have to work out some kind of an exception for when there's um extreme circumstances. So we'll have to come back to that next week. Uh are there any transfers to make today?
Yes, four hundred and ninety-five dollars from office assistant illegal and nine thousand from Snow Ice to Transfer Station.
Transfer Station.
Um calling him.
Got you. Um I would motion approve those two transfers.
I second the motion.
Any discussion on it? Ball vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Any yes, that's unanimous approval. Sign those. If it's the next, I yeah, the next time is the fire company.
Okay, um Susan and I talked about some suggested changes. I got some aircrafts in there. Can I send it to the lead, to the lawyers to take a look at it?
Yeah.
Okay, the only other thing that I had a question um in that contract, the current contract says that the, it says under the insurance with only commercial reasonable deductibles as the town approves. Have we ever approved a deductible amount? It says that in the contract, the old contract and the existing contract.
No, but they only, they only do the policy for the building. We do the policy for
Yeah, well, they have the building, but it talks about them being responsible for the building and there's much illegal reason about how much it goes to cover, but then they have that one sentence in there. The reasonable deductible is the town approves, you know, so it, because the lawyer may ask it, so who who would I send that to? And, you know, I could give it off in the next couple of days. Donna?
You get, you have my time.
The legal, here's the, here's the existing contract, here's the proposed changes. Have her define what a long-term contract is versus the one year that he he suggested, you know, we need to clarify that issue.
I mean, it needs to be more than a year if we know.
That's that's what I, but I was gonna let, my question to her is right now, you know, define a long-term contract.
What's the number of years we can do?
Right, and I can get, you know, so I can give, you know, give it off during the day or so, which is after the end break, and then we can try to get it right up your shit. So we can give some back to Sean to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, did you, were you able to get that to Donna?
Yes.
Okay, so that you know
That's what I, that was new contract, yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm, the only thing that worries me is that Peter didn't like that contract, but
The Metta contract?
I I wondered, like, has he had that email that had a bunch of other things in it, but I was actually
Rubbing your eyes?
It looked okay to me and it was specific to the Metta contract and that place, so that makes sense to me. And he seemed to think it was a done deal that we had received it, so we did get that, but then I think we because there was also his notes that had the others on stat, I think.
Well, there was the ARPA one he wanted to amend and the other one was a new one.
Right. The one, and I think we got
But it got, I missed the document and it got
Right.
convoluted a little bit, but now we
I think we straightened that out.
Straightened it up. Any line of anticipated business?
Another thing I was gonna suggest is the capital policy to put on the list. I can send you, you took the draft from a small
Yeah.
And I'll just send it out to you with no comments and then maybe we can put it on the agenda.
Yeah, so that, now that we have a full finance committee.
Maybe we can do that. I could send it out to every, I was gonna call Eileen and tell her that we banned talk on Roger today.
Okay.
So she can reach out to him to get, throw the clerk and and get and so they can get started on it, but
So do you
I have a draft on my computer at home. I just emailed it out and want no comment.
Yeah.
Can look at it.
So do you want the select board to review it first or the finance committee or both?
Both.
Okay.
I'll send it out.
Yeah, yeah, we can deal with that.
I have a quick question about the transfer station. I see they switched around all the
Did you get an email from Jim?
I saw what the the, how he had it mapped out.
Yeah.
The question is, are we gonna get a compactor for the cardboard eventually?
As I understand it, we're waiting for it from Rocky to there, but I mean, the initial effort was to try to buy the one that we had from Kisselen and Kisselen's response was to destroy the that one, like, because that's completely sensible use of resources, right? Like, what the heck? What kind of business decision is that?
Hopefully we'll get the metal for it for it.
I'm like, I'll just shoot myself in the foot because they're not happy with it.
One of them was sitting still back there. Why are we charging for keeping it on the property?
One is ours. We own one.
Oh, really?
We own one compactor and we rented one from them.
Okay, but that's indicative.
It's ridiculous and it's a terrible business decision on top of being vindictive and stupid. Like, I just don't, ugh.
Oh, wastefulness, that's the same.
Bless Jim's heart for like coming up with a, with a way to cope in the interim.
Well, that's good to, I just wondered about the compactor.
And, yeah, I don't blame you for wondering. I think people seem to be working out well.
No, I think the transfer, they're doing good up there. They've been, you know, they're all out there helping, you know, it's definitely different than it was.
Um Eileen did come up with a potential candidate for the transfer station committee. I reached out to her and haven't yet had a conversation, like just reached out to her and this this just happened. Um also, there's a meeting next Wednesday about, so there's legislation up for like, what is the, what's it called, responsibility? I always get it wrong. Product stewardship. Basically, the, it's paints is the first one up, but they're trying to get companies that make products to be responsible for the disposal of their products, which they're doing all over Europe. So it's not actually a new idea, but it makes a lot of sense because it tries to include the price of disposal and the price of purchase, so people actually understand that they're, what they're paying for, right, because it's hidden now. But anyway, so they're doing it with paint and there's pressure to go forward with that, so I'm getting a little bit of confidence. Whatever. I I don't know what'll come of it, but I was just letting you know it's going.
Great, yeah, I saw that. I think the timing worked out, though.
Yeah, like it works for me to do it again. You got a job and I don't, so I don't have an excuse.
There's no problem. So we'll get great in a minute. So we don't have the six?
I only have the two. Yeah, because she did exhibit twenty-seventh, but she's, whatever. Um what, whose color should Yeah, red, blue and green.
Uh, the thirteen?
Thirteen, yeah. Because the twenty should be very quick.
My copy, the first change is green, where's this older project MVP? That is Justin.
Okay.
The next one is also purple and red.
Oh, really?
Oh, you know what, green, green.
When you move, okay.
Um and blue is frame.
I know, I know I had some changes, but all right, oh, I did send you my thing, but Yeah, they're not in here.
I did them this morning, so
All right, that's fine, but I I have them, so.
Do you want us to read?
Yeah, I was gonna, so under two signed truck loan taken away.
Yeah.
Um I had uh, Justin said that this is a six-month note to bring this loan into alignment with the other loans.
Yeah, that works for me.
You're right, you're just writing it on one copy and both then
Or do you wanna just if if we accept them all, is it easy just to email them all and stuff?
I don't know.
They did email them to me. I don't know why they didn't
I did. Yeah, I, for some reason they didn't hit it. And then in the next sentence, it says, at that time in November, the town will make a forty thousand principal.
Works, yeah, that's good.
And under C in recall vote. Uh let's see, you may have done the same thing. Uh I, Melissa said that if the board instead of they
Yeah.
wants
That were obviously.
To follow the request, that's all, yeah, that was it. I think that's all we got.
Surely.
Discreet.
We should send it for changes.
I'll keep it in mind.
Yours went in there, Frank.
Well, that's because she told me to do it.
Didn't come on there and come on there, wait for another day, so
Because I'm never doing it.
Motion approved June thirteenth minutes have amended.
So.
Any discussion? Call vote, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
That's your name, it's Prive Rose.
Thanks for being so attentive to the panel, everybody.
June twentieth.
I didn't have anything on the I mean, if we did, it'd be a little bit sad. There's not a lot of
Sitting in the car and the star above the wine.
I thought, but like it was like we all voted, vote this for Shane, vote this for Shane, vote this for Shane, and it's pretty straightforward. There's not a lot of
It's been good.
Right, yeah, exactly. It's perfectly, there's a lot with it. So motion to approve the four minutes for June twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Um I'm reading on six twenty-seven.
Correct. Me too.
So just to wrap up, I will convert the contract from Southern Ber- for Southern Berkshire into a Word document, which I will send out.
Okay.
Melissa's gonna follow up with Southern Berkshire and Sean about, well, letting them know that we want a contract with them.
Yeah, is it easier for me to reach out to Donna and see if she can convert what she sent us?
I think I can.
Oh.
Yeah, I wish people would always.
Because it almost looked like a scanned copy when she sent it to me and they're always
The government's quite strict.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I know of a, I know someone who's been doing that, because I had a couple times when I was in school where I would
You just have to check afterwards, but sometimes the media doesn't convert perfectly.
I pray, where I would like lose a doc and lose something.
Yeah, or sometimes it changes the uh characters.
Right, or puts weird characters in or screws up the whole formatting, whatever. Like, it's not always seamless.
Actually so, and then the Metta grant, you did, I just didn't see if you emailed or not. Did you e- I think you already said you did, but maybe not, okay.
I did. I replied and I replied about Donna and Beth.
Okay.
Um and the center said, we found it and on behalf of the board, we found this and if it meets our approval.
Yeah.
I I mean, like, maybe Peter will be upset because he wanted to change it and that's what his comments were, but I didn't have that impression.
I didn't know if he wanted to change it.
It might have been that we thought that there was one contract and that there were actually two. That's what I'm
Well, definitely two.
Right. But you see what I'm saying? We may have thought that it was a contract and comments on the contract or modifications, but it was actually comments and two contracts.
Yeah. So we'll probably sign that next week. Um any o- anything else? Any other, anything else?
Yeah, I'll do the follow-up on the solar with the fire company.
You'll follow up with the solar and fire company, but I think until we have a more solid answer, we're gonna.
We need to postpone it.
And then if they wanna move forward with it, if they're confident they wanna move forward with it, we'll just go forward as was initially planned. If not, we'll have to regroup, but the ARPA funds are fairly flexible, so we can.
Right, we can do that. And then I'll send out the capital, the draft of the.
Yes, which will go on next week's agenda.
And I'll reach out to Eileen and make sure she knows that she has her.
Roger's a better point, yeah.
The only question, so if you send it to both the capital planning policy, to both the slacks, select board and the finance committee.
You'll just send it separately to you guys, just as a document?
To the financial?
Even though to you guys, I can talk to the finance.
Yeah, well, I think the idea is that we'll each get it, and then depending on how many changes there are. If there aren't a lot, we'll probably just meet at a joint meeting and flush out minor changes and try to approve it. And if there are more, maybe we'll have to do something different.
Okay.
If we, if we have real big differences of opinion, then we need to have a conversation.
Well, that's all I'm.
I mean, I think in the end, it's all about a conversation anyway. Yeah. Okay.
All right, motion adjourned.
Do you have anything else? No.
Second.
Second.
I'll go, yes.
Yes.
Comedian. Time on eleven, any else?
It's only an hour and forty. All right.
We got some.